Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. And last, Leah Green will lead us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
How flag do you pledge allegiance to?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item is the approval of tonight's agenda.
I just have one question, Kurt. When we talk about Councilman Josh Turnbull,
Yes.
is that gonna include us? Can we also talk about replacing Mr. Turnbull with someone else?
Well, um, I don't know how the mayor was structured or thought about it, but yes.
That was my intentions. But I, I, I don't plan on calling the vote tonight.
Are we just nominating and, or are we?
Well, you can, but.
Can we remove that for the discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, as long as I don't have to put on the agenda to amend it, then I'm okay.
Yeah. I should have concluded that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So just to clarify before we move forward with that, if we, if the council sees fit that they want to vote tonight, can they vote tonight based off of what's on the agenda currently? Or do we need to add verbiage into that? To state discussion of new council member.
It is, it is on there, it's a, it's a notice of resignation. And I guess you all can handle it however you wanna handle it.
I just know our charter specifically says one thing, I just wanna make sure we follow if that's.
And here says the council shall appoint qualified person to fill such vacancy for the remainder of the act by determining. It goes on, that's the, that's the general statement, so. That is left up to you all, how you wanna handle it. I just didn't know how the mayor felt, you know. So, but yes, it's on there, it's on there for the point of discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Leah's second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now the next item is for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to come tonight just to say, I enjoyed working with you all over the last two years. Thank you for the opportunity to work with you. It's been good to get to know each other. I feel like I just kinda started figuring out what it was I was supposed to be doing, so. Now I've moved out to somewhere else where I don't know what I'm doing. Mr. Van Gogh got to see me struggle through my first docket yesterday. There'll be more struggles coming up ahead, but I just wanna say thank you. I enjoyed the opportunity to work with you, and I know you all do great things for the next two years.
Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. Anything else?
I'll just say, Mr. Mayor, that Friday is Creekwood's homecoming game, starts at seven o'clock. And also, Sweet Charlotte has their ribbon cutting tomorrow with the Chamber. I think it was ten to four that they have their open house. If anybody's ever been there.
Okay, alright.
I don't know what time the actual ribbon cutting happens, but they said their opening hours is ten to four.
We got anything on that?
The ribbon cutting?
Yeah, from usually the Chamber sends, sends out.
They sent an email to me today, and that's the only thing, that's the only reason I did it.
Usually the Chamber sends something out. We'll check it out. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to consideration of the regular council minutes from August the 27th.
One item, you go ahead, you probably have the same one, go ahead. The one thing that I, I think needs to be cleared out is where it says Josh Turnbull motioned to approve first reading of tax rate ordinance 25-21. Tax rate ordinance 25-21 makes it sound like we are in favor of not using the certified tax rate. And I believe the verbiage that Josh said in his motion was, we plan to move forward with the certified tax rate. You wanna remove that differently?
No, I was gonna say you can add the word with the certified tax rate after the 25-21.
That way it's clear.
Yeah. Well, basically, the only thing we're missing there is certified tax rate.
Yes.
And we'll address it when we get to. That agenda.
Anything else on the minutes? So we need an approval?
Make a motion to approve with the change we mentioned.
Okay, the adding of the certified tax rate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, now the next thing is the consideration of the regular wastewater minutes from September the 10th. Chad is unable to be here tonight.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is our old business, and the first item under old business is the property code violations.
Mr. Mayor, council, 105 Fifth Road, we continue to review that property. Mr. Span's property was accorded on October the 1st. There are several letters that went out the past month. One was the 2005 Old Columbia Road, daily. I don't know the status of a lot of these properties, other than the letter had went out. Miss Pauls could bring us up to speed if she knows. You got 109 Hoover Letterman out some time ago.
Smith was cleaned up.
Okay. And then there's 108 Cooper Road, which is, I guess, gives that was received on eight-two. I don't really know the status of that property, but I thought it did go out. There's 3373 Highway 48 North. That letter was certified as being received on August the 2nd. That was regarding that structure needing to repair, I'm not sure of that status. Then there's 131 High School Street, where they're operating a business in residential zone area. That was received on eight-thirteen, I think that's Julian-ish. If that's been corrected, I don't know if the business is still in operation.
There's no bailed in, there's no.
I haven't seen any chicken coo.
Yeah.
That's what he had.
Gotcha.
Chance.
Then there's use of a residence at C2 District, which was that Kimberly Demongery. That was sent out on eight-nine. I can't remember if we corrected that or not, that's the one, it's called, it seemed like they came before that.
Oh.
Chad spoke with them and they weren't living there, I'm not sure if they're still there.
There's no automobiles parked up there anymore, so, or there hasn't been in a few weeks.
Which one was that?
So one up there by Duke's Market between Todd Street. It's on the north side of Todd Street.
There's 4035 Highway 48 North. That's two residents who were in the Hall of War District.
What was that address, I need to know.
Twenty, excuse me, 4035 Highway 48 North. That's Jacob Forte and Diane Bedwell. That's the one that we brought the account of the county commissioner.
Oh, Jacob Forte?
Yes. Yeah, that's the one I think they're, I think they're still working on. They're senior, so that's before the planning commission right now. So, coming update on it, we're trying to address those properties that need addressing. And I think some of the folks, most of the folks are complaining. The one that Mr. Span occupies, we just decided that he's got to stay the course of that. About every ninety days, he's in more. So, other than that, that's the update. Unless there's some other properties you all wanna address?
We sent a letter out to 148 Lindley, I get the package, it was one. Lindley because their trash cans are over at the edge of the.
Oh, yeah.
We sent that out today.
We ain't got pictures of that, it's not here.
Seven, does it continue to cover law offices?
We sent them a letter, if they don't respond, then it'll go your letter.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
I guess in that, I don't wanna address that, 148 Lindley. In that situation where, I mean, it looks like to me, they roll their garbage cans out to the end of the driveway to put their garbage in for garbage pickup. Well, two or three of them have fallen over into the ditch, and they've been there for a while. Is that something that the city can go by and pick up, pick those cans out of the ditch?
I don't know why it couldn't. I guess the cans whose property.
Gordons.
The owners that own the prop, the cans.
The Gordons, yeah.
Yeah.
In our contract.
If they're gonna block the, and that's a four-way ditch line, soon rain like today may become the issue, so sure.
Maybe down at the bottom of the hill after today, I don't know.
In our trash pickup contract, the term of disposal number seven states that all trash cans will be removed from the street and.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that's another point. For sure, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Van? Alright, we'll move on then to the second reading of the tax rate ordinance 25-2-1.
Hmm? Was this drafted by you? I'll just be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, I don't feel comfortable voting on this document because this isn't the document that we agreed to, and quite frankly, it's just blank.
This is the document that we had last month, and we just wanted, before I did any changes to it, I needed to make sure we were staying with the tax rate, so any changes can be made tonight and the tax rate can be passed.
Right, we changed, this is the same one that was there last month.
Yes.
Which is also the same, in your verbiage, we had a change. I just don't, I haven't seen the correct document yet, so it's gonna be hard for me to vote on this ordinance when it clearly states in this ordinance, "The council of the city of Charlotte, Tennessee has determined that current revenues are insufficient to fund necessary operating and capital expenditures." That's just, that's not what we agreed to, so. If we have to vote on this document, when I vote no, that's why I'm voting no, because I just don't. It's essentially a document that doesn't say what we said last month, and it's not filled in, so.
Mr. Mayor, certainly without, you can amend the document, that's, this is second reading. And you all had a discussion, whatever your regulation in the discussion is, so long as the rest of the council, majority of you vote that way, you can vote to add language or remove language, whichever one that needs to be.
I'm asking, is this a form that has to be done this way by the state? Or is this just something that was generated in case we change?
Yeah, it's just, this is just generated in case you change, that's it. But we do have to have some type of this verbiage in here, not, not the, doesn't meet the criteria, but this is just.
Wasn't there a blank form last year, where you'd say, hey, we're gonna keep their original rate or whatever, one line or two liners or something like that? Or, I mean, we can delete a bunch of paragraphs and just say, hey, we're not accept the certified tax rate if that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I didn't know, you know, it had all these things, hey, we are allowed to change blah blah blah, so. I think the first two paragraphs is it. 'Cause it says we're taking the certified tax, if you just change the.
Right, so you would delete paragraph three.
Yeah, we did that last month, that's my whole point. Still in this one.
It was first reading, second reading finishes the document.
In the first reading, we said we did not want that, that's why I'm asking why the change wasn't made.
Because we have to get to the public, we have to go through the public hearing and the second reading to make sure everything is the way it's going to be, because things have changed periodically throughout time.
So when do we see the real document?
When you make the changes that you want to complete and go forward with, and I can email it to you tomorrow, with the signatures from everyone. You would just delete the third and fourth paragraph and put point twelve zero seven, which is the certified tax rate.
That's where I am.
And it's complete.
I'm actually, I don't see any issues with. It's one, two, it's, it's in the second paragraph, the one, the certified tax rate is one, two, oh, seven.
And we're taking out the third and fourth.
One paragraph where it says, we don't think there's enough money to operate. Tennessee doesn't allow us to do it. You give it that one, or you still?
As long as I see a signed copy tomorrow.
So with that being said, with the signed copy, is there a motion to approve the second reading of the tax rate? Certified tax rate.
With the leading paragraph three and four, adding one, two, oh, seven.
Point one, two, zero, seven.
Point one, two, oh, seven cents per hundred. And. We had a copy of it tomorrow. Do I make a motion? Pass it with those changes.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Second reading passes. Uh, the next item we have is Josh Wright, and Josh is here tonight. With any questions, updates, things of that nature on the city park. He and I.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, come on this side. So, y'all saw the preliminary plan for the park last month, I apologize, I couldn't be here. My wife's birthday, if you're married, I don't have to say anything else.
Understood.
But did y'all get a chance to look at the plan and kinda study what we were proposing? 'Cause I can go through it real quick, that be okay?
Sure.
We got our, we got our existing survey from Young Hobbs and Associates. I believe it was four days before your meeting. They had some issues with different property lines and found out that at one point in time there was a city street that was planned to go through the back of this property. So I thought, why not take that where that city street was proposed and connect it up to the alley that would connect to the square? So that's what we were proposing in this plan. The other thing is, when you look at the survey, and I can bring that with me next month, the existing survey, the way the contours are on the existing site, there is somewhat of a flat spot out there, and that's where I'm proposing that we put that park. So what I've shown is a ADA compliant parking area right here. And then you've got an ADA compliant ramp that takes you to this first tier of the playground, and then another ADA compliant ramp that comes to this lower tier of the playground. And then you've got a series of switchback ramps that take you down to the historic spring, where the cobblestone spring is. So, I don't know how much of that y'all saw last month, and again, I apologize that I couldn't be here. But that's kind of what we're proposing. There'll be a, there'll be a series of parking benches that are proposed along that ramp. That ramp, it has a one and twelve slope, so it's, it's a very minor slope. So you'll be able to stroll down around the park, the playground area, and eventually get down to the historic spring. So, did y'all have any questions on this portion?
Seen any dollars yet?
No, not yet. I knew I was gonna get that question, I've got a fire station drawing to show you too, so. No dollars yet, so what Mayor and I have talked about is the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant, what it includes and what it doesn't include. So I'm working on getting some renderings done for this, if you all are okay with this plan. Getting some renderings done of this plan, so that you can kinda see the playground pieces and the park benches and the ramp and the lighting and all of those things. So, once we have that, then we can start trying to assign a dollar figure to it. So, as you all are aware, nothing is cheap anymore. So it's, it's not gonna, I, I don't see it being an inexpensive park, but it'll be a great park for the city, for sure. Just gotta find, find a few grants to pay for it, so. Do y'all have any questions on the park? Okay, so next month, I'll have some renderings for you for the, the park.
Okay.
Can I go ahead and show the?
Let me, let me touch on what I found out about ten days ago. Is that both grants, the one that we have received, and of course, Blue Cross Blue Shield, neither one of those grants allows the use of money to do any grading or dirt work. So, we just found this out by Michael Mills, with GNRC. Now, he and I are scheduled to get together, because that would've been nice to know upfront. And, but anyway, we have, or, we have acquired a local guy to take the drawings and the surveys that Josh has had doing, and he's willing to give us just a ballpark, ballpark estimate as to what it might cost to get the ground ready. My argument with Michael is that, you know, does every city already have their ground ready to put a playground equipment on? And, so, anyway.
I would say no, I would say not a lot of that.
No, no. But we may be looking for another grant.
Is there gonna be like a pavilion and stuff?
Yes.
Not in that dark area?
So, so it, so it's hard to see from there, but there's two, it's a two-tiered park. And I've got playground in each because the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant specifically talks about playground equipment. We'll be able to put, and I've got an idea that I would like to show you all next month on your pavilion. So, that, that's something that could go on this lower tier playground. Like to try to keep the, the actual kids' playground close to that ADA parking and close to the square. Good question. Anything else? Can I, can I move to the fire station real quick, is that okay? Chief, can you put this over? I believe that Chief and Mayor showed you all the preliminary floor plan for the fire station that we've been working on. We have ECS, I contacted them today, they have not performed our soil testing yet. But it's supposed to be within the next ten days. So, once we have their soil testing, I'm fairly confident we'll be able to put it on your all's existing site. You've already got a building there, the footprint of this is larger than that existing building, but not, not by a lot. So Chief Miller and I have kinda gone through the exercise on how we would put this building on that piece of property. One thing that we did do, and I don't know, Chief, if you touched on this or not, Chief, why don't you come up here? He's worked distance on this as I have. But one thing we had initially talked about was a drive-through apparatus bay. And because of the site that we're working with, it would be very difficult to get the proper radius for that turn to get around the building and pull the fire apparatus through. So what we're proposing is three bays, these would be two deep, that would be a seagull bay. And the trucks would have to be backed in those doors. These doors are fourteen feet wide and fourteen feet tall, in case, you know, Chief needs to get a size check to. Apparatus. But no, I, that's, that's pretty standard for a fire apparatus, so I think we would be in good shape for that. You went through the plan with them last month, Chief, is that right?
Not entirely, definitely, we didn't have any measurements or.
Okay, okay, let me, let me walk through the plan real quick, and then we'll kinda talk about overall length and width. But we can, we can talk about the benches first. From this exterior facade to over here where you've got the tool room, the cascade room, and the hose storage, we're at about a hundred and forty feet total in length, and about eighty-three feet total in depth. That eighty-three feet comes from your standard apparatus, your fire apparatus, would have to be, to get it double loaded like this, you'd have to have an eighty-foot deep bay. So, that's what that is. You've got, as I mentioned before, your tool room, cascade room, hose storage, and then the sprinkler riser room. And then over here, reception office, entry, training room right up front. So if you all wanted to have meetings there, if you brought in, let's say you wanted to bring in a couple surrounding counties to have fire training there, they're not wandering all through the rest of the station, they're all right there up front. Kitchen, the day room is in the middle. You've got a covered grill area here on the backside of the station. And then bump room, and then men's and women's toilets, shower room, and then buff room. So, everything that the, the fire department would need to have a fully functioning fire station, would quite frankly, be used as a recruiting tool for your volunteers as well. So, and I told Chief I'm pulling for a couple big flat screens in there in case you wanna watch UT games in there.
We tried to put a lot of thought in about future growth. And try to go ahead and plan for that. So, we're not into this twenty years and have to add, do an addition or change things around.
And trucks do you have now, Chief?
We have six, actually, well, trucks right now. There is one truck that I would like to get rid of eventually. We have a truck right now that was donated to us from Ashland City, and a lot of shopping hanging. And once that comes out, I'd like to see by getting rid of that other truck that's there.
I just wanna make sure we have enough spots for all your trucks.
Yes, sir. So, with like this bay and then some of these, not every truck that we have is this long.
Right.
So we can actually double stack or triple stack some of the smaller units. And then we also thought, you know, later on down the road, we may have to buy a latter truck. So, a lot of thought and planning was put into this for future.
Roughly, yeah, I take the property now. I take the building that we're using.
I don't know how big the building is, we, we took the, you know how these four feet they do?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'd say it's maybe forty, fifty foot deep. Lengthwise, maybe a hundred fifty.
I was gonna say.
Hundred, hundred twenty pounds.
Twenty, a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty, but I.
I haven't truly measured that. I haven't truly measured that.
What we did do is take this layout, put it over an aerial to scale to get to the soil scientist, so he knew where to drill for the corners of the building. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So weird question, but like, years to come, if we did ever outgrow it, could you build up over it?
That's not a weird question. It's a great question. You could. You wouldn't do it on the apparatus bay side, but if you had to, you could take the roof off of this side, add another floor, and go up another floor. That's possible. I think it's a really good question, though, because you know. So I will have some exterior renderings of the fire station for you all next month, too. Really, we're excited to show you all those next month, so.
Were we working on grants for this yet, or?
Well, gotta wait to work. So yes, yes and yes. The soil scientist, yes, we do have to have that. I can go ahead and prepare renderings while we're waiting on the soil scientist. The next step would be to get the survey for that property, if the soils work out, which I think they will. But while we're getting that survey, I don't think it'll be as complicated. I mean, this, you know, it's a lot of history right behind us. So getting that survey properly done took a little time. I don't think that one will take as much time. So while they're finishing up the survey, I'll be finishing up the renderings. Once we have survey renderings, we'll be able to start getting some grants for the fire department. But when you go after these grants, they want to see plans, they want to see renderings, they want to see. So we'll have that. We'll have the survey in place. We'll be ready to try to get some money for you all.
So with the CDVG opens in October, if they want to go ahead and motion the letter of intent, that would be a great move tonight.
You took the words right out of my mouth. That would be great.
Can you explain what that is?
Ms. Jennifer, you want to explain the grant? So each fiscal year, the CDVG grant works on a different fiscal timeframe, but each year, you can submit your plans and drawings for a grant with CDVG. What's its stand for, Jennifer? Do you remember?
Community Block Development Grant.
There you go. And we've got a new person, isn't that right? Or is that a different grant for the park? We were working with Gretchen.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a.
Chris Barber.
Yes, Chris, yes. So having those renderings, having those drawings, we can go after that grant, which is good timing for us.
And they'll expect a letter of intent from the City of Charlotte, which is saying the City of Charlotte plans to apply for the CDVG grant.
And Ms. Jennifer, is that a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, or, okay?
Could be.
Okay.
I sent the information out last year on the CDVG, and it's the same link as last year.
There are other grants we can apply for as well?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think we'll have to.
For this specific project, I mean?
I'd like to try for both, the park and the fire station. There's probably more grants out there for the fire station than the park. But we'd still like to try to apply for both, if that's, if Mayor and Council are okay with that. So do y'all have any questions on the fire station?
If we get to a point, I don't know if this includes, you know, anything design-specific on the inside. If we get to a point where we need to start pinching some pennies somewhere, do we have a plan for that as well?
We do. We could start value engineering, but I don't want to start value engineering before we even start engineering.
Sure.
But yeah, there are things we can do.
I just want to make sure that option is available whenever we get to that point.
It's always.
For the park as well.
Yeah, it's always there. The park's a little different, because that is very site-specific. And there's not really a lot of options with that piece of property to get a park back there. With this building, there's a couple things that I would encourage you all to consider and not kind of value-engineering way. One would be make it as energy-efficient as you can afford to. I'm not, we don't need to do geothermal heating or anything like that, but a good building envelope. And I can explain more of that. That's just going to save the city money. It's going to keep this building relevant for fifty years. And I think that's what you all would like to do, is if you're going to go through the process and build this, you want it to last. You want it to be energy-efficient. You don't want to be paying an arm and a leg for electrical rates on this building. So there's things we can do to do that. But as far as value engineering, if it gets to that point, we can do that. Any more questions? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Josh.
I'll leave these drawings here, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The next item, Charlotte Lions Club. Of course, we have a representative from the Charlotte Lions Club here tonight. I think this is something that both parties are certainly interested in. And I know the Lions Club has already started doing some improvements and would like to continue to do some improvements. I think, and I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I think, I don't know that it was clear from last month's meeting about the remodeling of the kitchen. Is that going to be something that the Lions Club is going to take care of and fund? Or do they expect the city to?
The Lions Club is prepared to fund that.
Okay.
The problem we had with this is maybe what the city would want to do. Jason may explain this also, was a few handicap things, issues we have to deal with. But also electrical issues, and that's one of the things there, whether we need to do something like electrical issue before we decide before we remodel the kitchen. We don't want to do that, so that might be an issue. Jason might want to figure out what the city would need to do as far as electrical issues.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you get those, did everybody get the picture I sent? Yeah, so basically, we went down there and did a good altar, and started all the house down that building, but it becomes a potential, it can be fairly easy. It's just a block building, you know, it's got old metal, probably some barrejoist roof on it. I think they framed up a wood roof over it some time ago. Everything is pretty much home-grade coming in the door. You've got some improvements that could be pretty easy there. You know, that being, it would be like some type of assembly as far as code-wise, but existing building code gives you a lot of flexibility when it becomes an existing building. Do ADA requirements, it's called recent. So that bathroom in there, in those pictures, it looks sufficient enough to meet ADA requirements. So there would not really necessarily have to. That could serve as like a unisex restroom. It's home-grade. But yeah, I think the first thing we'd want to do, and I think the goal here was for the City of Charlotte to really think about what improvements they would want to do as far as that building. Lion Club is prepared with some monetary donations to help facilitate that. But I think that'd be a good start for y'all to assess it, come up with a game plan of what the Charlotte really wants to do with that building. And then as far as ADA requirements, wiring, utilities to come out the back. So all of those are pretty readily accessible. They had some ideas for cleaning out the garage portion. You could remove those trucks out of there. The plumbing is on that back corner. You actually could have a case opening to enter that space with some stairs, because your ADA accessibility would be in the front where the bay doors are. So you wouldn't have to make that transition. So a lot of those things are very dual, for not a lot of money in terms of what that building could turn into. But I think the first part was, for them to do any upgrades in the kitchen, I think you tackle that wiring first, get some of those circuits out, that's to get those screw in, fuses, and those boxes. So that would be priority one. Take that drop seal out, probably get all those things out of those conduits, trace those wires. But, yeah, that's about all I got. I had a real nice report typed up, kind of touching on that, but our IT department decided to upgrade my system while I was on vacation, and I come back and had nothing. So I'll have Jennifer the picture, so I'm sorry I didn't have a report for you, but we kind of touched on all that.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
Did we clear up everything pretty much? We'll take care of the kitchen, remind you, that is part of the.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was, to me, that was not very clear from the last meeting. But do you know, does it have a 200-amp service? Doesn't have 200-amp? Is it a hundred or a hundred? Or 125?
It's not much in there.
Okay.
Barely could run a stove.
Well, I was gonna say, now you've got a gas stove.
Yeah, one gas and one lit.
Oh, do you? I don't know. It would probably, wouldn't hurt to have a 400-amp, but, I mean, I don't. I mean, I think 200-amp would carry it, but.
The only idea that I can come up with, Mr. Mayor, with this year's current budget, if the city, if the council chose to try and upgrade these buildings however we see fit. I mean, based off of some other line items that we have on here, I mean, we'd have to probably move some money out of our donation budget. Nowhere else we kind of have.
Yeah, a lot of.
And I'm not, you know, I'm not saying I'm for or against, you know, I definitely want the building to be operational and I don't want it to be unsafe. I think last meeting, we were kind of talking about it, where it was mentioned about it becoming not just the Lions Club, more community event area.
Yeah.
So that's the other, I guess that's the other question I kind of need answered, too, before we decide on that as well. Is it, are we saying it's open for other people to use it if they want to, or is it the Lions Club?
Let me add.
We envision that as a community center, open to the community for different uses, also for the city. If the city wanted to rent that out for events, that would be an income stream coming in for the city. So it would be, could be an income stream, and then it could be a place to have community events free for, you know. Instead of two nights a month, we have things going down there all the time, going on. We've also got a plan to replace the windows. We've already got that set up. We replace those windows, they're like 1950-style, and they need to go. So we've already got somebody contacted and contracted to replace the windows in the Lions Club apartment. There's one window and the other, the whole part that needs to be replaced, and we're going to take the other windows in our apartment.
Well, I was thinking, you know, along the line of getting quotes to upgrade the electric system, maybe now. But then far as doing any kind of construction work, you know, would have to be put off to the next budget year, in that we can budget for it. That's my thinking.
Yeah, I'm good with that, as long as we're saying it's open to the community.
Yeah.
Like the city, yeah.
Yeah.
And that sounds like what Mr. Shaver's trying to say, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So you think next year's budget?
For as the redoing of that end of the building, yeah.
Okay.
It ain't gonna be too long. We're gonna be getting into it anyway.
Well, not the grants, not the fiscal budget grants.
There's possibility there's grants out there for things like that. We just have to check, look into it.
The fiscal budget won't reset till July, so that's. If you're saying like 2025, that would still be on, that could still be on this year's budget, so that's why I just want to make sure. I understand.
So do we need to make a motion to get bids for the electrical?
I think you could probably.
Yeah, I don't.
To approve it.
Yeah, I think, I think, I could get the bids, but I think if we decide to go through with it or not, then I have to have motions and pass to proceed.
If it's a use that you all need to be concerned.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a wonder building codes still allows that. All right, we're gonna move on. The Charlotte Festival, I thought went really well. I don't know how the rest of you felt about it, but I guess it was nice and hot, which kind of, I don't know. Anyone have any comments, any? I think there's room, some room for improvements. I do want to thank those that helped, Jennifer, those that volunteered. Without them, they were getting traffic in and off the square while these vendors were trying to get set up. So I think it might be a pretty good thing to maybe solicit a few more volunteers next year for next year's festival. If you have any suggestions, I think we're open to them, to look at them and discuss them. One thing that I never thought or paid much attention to, but during the teardown process, we've got a band that's still playing under the tent. We've got spectators watching, and then we've got vendors driving their vehicles up and down. That won't happen next year, not if I'm still living. To me, I just, that's just disrespectful to the entertainer, as well as those trying to listen to the entertainer. But anyway.
We got a final tally on revenue and expenses on this?
We still have some expenditures coming out, so I'm waiting on those final ones. With the sheriff and the fire chief, we had some conversations about traffic control on the side streets. If you want to discuss that a little bit, we're working on a plan next year.
Yeah, we're gonna try to do a traffic pattern plan, so we can, with the parade and the vendor traffic and stuff like that, we'll have a better flow pattern, not have any pickups.
For all of Charlotte, since it encompasses the whole area and not just a square now, so side streets.
Line up also.
Stop traffic from going up hay shed. It's going to be a bigger plan than we've ever had before. Also, looking at misting tents for next year and things like that, because we had, what, five heat exhaustions?
Three.
Three, got three heat exhaustions. And the Lions Club has already committed to helping next year as well for the setup. They're a big, big help, big help.
I know it's a look at the draw, but how do we feel about an October festival from a heat standpoint?
We would compete with White House on the 12th. They do, there's a second weekend.
I know it's been moved back before, because when I was, when I was a kid, I think it was in, or August.
August, yeah.
It was a hundred and four degrees.
It was in August.
Twenty-two, it was in October, I think. Twenty-one, twenty-two?
The one year it was moved, right?
We got rained out, so we rescheduled. It was semi-successful, not like it usually is, the reschedule. One thing we can look at, you know, we do need more manpower to. One thing we can look at, you know, we do need more manpower to keep the vendors, cause they do sign a contract stating they will stay signed up till five. And every vendor I told, you have to stay till five, but I'm just, you know.
Oh, even, yeah, like I said, I know it was hot, and I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet after this. I know it was hot, people, people were getting hot and they left. And then around 4:30, when it started cooling down a little bit, because it got cloudy, people started showing back up and the vendors were packing up, leaving. So it's just a, I don't know, it's just, we, none of us, we can't control the weather or anything like that, so, but.
Always start it later too.
True.
Just try to get it into the night or early evening.
Yeah.
And that was suggested to me by this attorney here, that we move it later in the day to move into fireworks every year if we chose that route and have a more of a night event. But that would call for the square to have more lighting if we moved past dark. It's not bright enough.
Well, that's what we do for the Christmas ones at night.
We moved it to two to four this year.
It's gonna be in the afternoon this year, because we've got, we've got vendors wanting to come. And it'd be easier for people that are shopping to see what they're trying to sell. So we, I mean, we would, we were gonna cover that later on in the new business, but.
Sorry.
Anyway, no problem. Um, anything else on the festival? Like I said, if you've got any suggestions, any ideas, um, write them down, get them to City Hall. And I will, you know, I'd like, I'd like to look over them. All right, moving on to the next one, uh, the paving bid, paving of some city streets. Uh, we received one bid like last year. The total amount for, is it? Five, five different streets. Or whether we want to move forward with?
We only wanted it at 125. I think it was three streets. One of the three, whatever they have on, uh, Dodson and whatever the other.
Okay, Picnic?
Yeah. So it's only $74,000 in that incoming budget. We still have to put the race stuff in. And if we add more streets to this, plus we got electrical things for the Lions Club, which streets really need to have it.
Todd Street's desperate.
Okay, there's two additional, it's Corlou.
Corlou and Phillips.
I don't know what Corlou is.
Uh, it's, it's down. Right, well, it's right across Picnic.
Oh, it's down in that area.
It's a dead end street that.
People in the Dodson, it's on the right. Wanna go up to Corlou?
Okay.
That's that street?
Yeah.
Where a church is?
Right, just right, yeah, yeah, right before the church, uh-huh.
Coming either after. Remove some streets or amend our budget?
Yeah, amend it. We have a way of making more revenue.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that we stick with the original three, uh, which is Todd, Picnic, and Dodson.
And stick it at like 119.
That'd be like, yeah, 119. And, um, it's.
Yeah, and markings, if you wanted to add.
Yeah, and the markings, uh, but none of, I mean, those, none of those streets have markings on them now. What's a plastic stop bar?
That's what I wanted to know.
Except for like a dead end or something?
Plastic stop bar. It's an option on the.
Is it like for that dead end road maybe, like a?
It's got 50 feet.
Yeah, like a reflective bar or something that shows the end of a road.
Yeah, that's what it is.
It looks like a speed bus.
Those will think you're screwed down, and you know you're coming to a stop.
Huh?
Pagan mark, just the lines in between the road.
Yeah, yeah, that would be.
None of them have those over there.
No.
How many are those three streets?
119. Now, one thing that I will say, and he did not, it's just verbal, is if he got the bids, he would resurface the parking lot at the fire hall at the cost of sealing it? Is that what?
He didn't, he never told me that. But he did say it would be a close price to that, my understanding. That's what he kind of was saying, so I never heard him actually say that.
Okay.
So a stop bar is a solid white line, normally 12 to 24 inches wide at stop signs, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I would say we can cut out those options.
I mean, they're, they're not included in, in the, the 119. That's just something we would add on if we wanted it.
Have we done the drainage on those three? That's what we were talking about.
It, it's going, it's going to be addressed with the development.
Is it gonna be before we pay him or after we pay?
I don't know when he's gonna, it's probably gonna be before, because he ain't gonna get to it for a while. They, they're still on Highway 46. And so I don't, I mean, he didn't, he didn't specify a time or, but, I mean, we can push him until after the drainage issues are resolved.
I made a motion that we keep the original Todd, Picnic, and Dodson without the options.
Okay, motion made. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Uh, that moves us on to new business, uh, and that is, uh, concerning the vacating of Chair, Josh Turnbull, I don't like the word resignation, I'm sorry. It was, it was vacated, uh, because of circumstances that is certainly, uh, that makes, I think, every one of us excited and proud, because we know what kind of person you are. I do know that the process is for the council, uh, to, uh, select, uh, someone that is qualified to fill that position. I made the comment earlier that I would rather wait possibly for next month before bringing it up for a vote, so that the ones that are interested, which there are, I think, three that are here tonight, that are interested to give us, write down their qualifications and why they want to serve on the council. I think that's something that, that would be good, that's just, you know, my way of thinking.
Mr. Mayor, can you read the section?
Sure, so I, I would say so on September the 11th, Josh Turnbull submitted his resignation to the town, which was basically about 13 days ago. So just something to ponder, I'm myself. From a notice perspective, that makes sense to me, to give folks plenty of notice. There's a reservation, there's an open seat, and folks have an opportunity to get to some of that. As you said, uh, Section 2.06, if vacancy in office of mayor or councilman via further enacted, a vacancy shown exists if mayor or councilman resigns, dies, has been continuously disabled for a period of six months, so as to prevent him from discharging the duties of his office or is considered a malfeasance or a misfeasance in office, a felony or a violation of the election laws of the state. The council shall appoint a qualified person to fill such vacancy for the remainder of the unexpired term. If a tie vote by the council to fill a vacancy is unbroken for 15 days, the mayor or vice mayor, in case of a vacancy in the office of mayor, shall appoint a qualified person to fill the vacancy. At no time shall it be more than three members so appointed holding office. If a vacancy occurred with three members so appointed on the council, a special election shall be held by the county election commissioners on the eighth Saturday following occurrence of the vacancy. At which election, a mayor or councilman, as the case may be, should be elected to serve the remainder of the unexpired term in the vacant office, provided that no such election shall be held if a regular election will occur within six months. Candidates in such a special election shall be nominated by petitions, as provided in Section 2.01 of this act. So that's the complete section on 2.06. It does not specify a time when, and nomination or, uh, or an appointment by the council is to occur. Obviously, if there's a tie vote explains that, or if it goes on and it's a, uh, it stays open for more than, let's see, 15 days, unbroken for 15. Tie vote, it stays unbroken for 15 days. So just have some parameters there. But again, I would submit it's been 13 days, so I'll leave that to your all's judgment determination. If it's been insufficient notice for the public, I would submit to you, it probably, uh, probably, like the way you're suggesting, I do, if there was not a, that kind of gives it time, so.
I'm sorry, you go.
You go, I've been talking too much, you go.
My only thing is, okay, so it's the council's decision? And I think we should all be present to say who we want or to nominate. Are we all gonna be here next month? Ricky will not. Caleb, you gonna be here? Leah, Turtle? Ricky's, Ricky's out, I'd rather do it with Ricky here.
You could, I'll just interject, you could do, you could have a special called meeting for that sole purpose. Cause that's an option. I'm just trying to pose options to you all.
The 15 day timeline starts after the first vote or after the resignation?
No, not after the resignation. That, that, it says if a tie vote by the council to fill a vacancy is unbroken for 15 days, the mayor or mayor, the vice mayor in case of a vacancy in the office of mayor shall appoint a qualified person to fill the vacancy. So that 15 day time period is really talking about if there's a tie vote by the council for a period of. So in other words, right now, there are six voting, uh, members. Cause you had five councils, a six councilmen and a mayor that can vote, which seven, majority of four. Now you have six, still majority of four. So the mayor is able to vote by charter.
The 15 days is so it can be advertised for a special called meeting? Just to clarify that, that's what the, the tie can't be broken 15 days?
It didn't say that, but I mean, that's.
But that's the only way they can come together and discuss their vote.
A reasonable amount of time, sure.
So if, if the council wanted to nominate someone tonight, how would that work? Do we just make a motion to nominate them?
Make a motion to nominate someone and then?
Or we wanted to write down names or?
However, you all decide you want to do it.
That's, I think that, I think I saw the scoreboard, uh, school board do that method before too, so. I'm, I was, I came prepared to vote tonight. I don't know how you would want the vote situation to happen. I know you said you didn't want to, but if you did, would you rather someone call out a nomination or write down a name?
I mean, we could, either one, we could do either one.
With the three people? Or we can, I guess.
Well, I mean, the three people, uh, I'm assuming Stevie, you're one of them. Uh, Ben Killer Brew and Miss Annie back there, uh, they've all three expressed interest.
So how about we do this? Can I make a motion to hold a vote tonight? And then if it doesn't pass, then we don't hold a vote tonight?
So let me make sure I'm clear with your motion. Your motion would be to vote to proceed, to take a vote on nominating and approving and appointing a council person?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, yes.
So you still need four?
Still need four, cause you have six, uh, possible votes.
So if it's, we got six people here, if it's three, two, one, then it's not a tie?
Yeah, it's not a, that's, you have to have four to have.
Okay, so but it's not a tie, does the 15 day start?
No, you have voting on someone.
Okay, yeah.
We're just, Turtle made a motion to vote.
I would made it, I asked a question.
Okay, that's right.
I will, I will officially make a motion to hold a vote and to appoint a council member tonight.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
So now, Mr. Mayor, how would you like for us to proceed with the vote?
Should we write the names down?
So.
And use that, or do we?
Certainly you can do that, you can nominate a person. Again, Mr. Toulous, Councilman Toulous, you prefer, or did it? School board did write down names and basically until there was somebody that got a majority, so.
Can we hear from them?
Well, I mean, sure, we could, that's, that's the reason I was wanting to give them time to, give their qualifications as well as why they're interested. But yeah, we've got three here, and I don't know, there was actually another one.
Sheila Sessler?
Yeah.
And Jim Robertson?
Uh, they were both, but they're not here tonight, so, but I mean, if, yeah, if you want, if you want to hear from them to, Ben, we can start with you, as, as, you know, why, or why you'd like to sit on the council?
Well, I appreciate everybody. Everybody knows I've served for the term before, and I obviously enjoyed it and learned a lot. Hate that I missed running last election, but such is life. And plan on running again, when the election comes up for a council seat. You know, I miss it, so unfortunately I didn't catch the last election, like I said. And I appreciate all your consideration. Love Charlotte, Charlotte's my home, live in the city limits of Charlotte. I can be beneficial, served on the fire department for years, served as chief down there for a little while. And kind of, other than being on the council, I know we always had positions. Everybody kind of function, you know, handling service, street lights and signs and all that good stuff. You know, I think I've been beneficial there, and, uh, yeah. That's it, so I appreciate your, your thoughts about it. So I'm excited about it, and I look forward to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Steve?
Uh, Calro, I served on the council for four years. Ran for mayor, you beat me. Yeah, I'd like to be on it, I plan on running for office next time, but I'd love to, I think I can make a difference.
Okay, Miss Annie?
I'm new to Charlotte, but I've been an educator for 38 years. Um, I worked for the New York City Public Schools, and I ran a private school in Connecticut for many years. Charlotte is my home now, I'm part of the Lions Club. And I, I'd like to be part of the town council. Very vested here, and I'd rate to do all I can to take Charlotte there place. It is now, I know it's great, but I know it has a lot of.
Can you currently serve on the park board?
Yes, I can, yes.
Hey, thank you. So moving forward, uh.
You say you want two pieces of paper?
Yeah. Can you?
Put our name on it, and you put our selection. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, each of you. Yeah, yeah, each of you will have a piece of paper.
Let me just.
You want to?
We have.
I mean, we, we write on our papers.
Sure, sure.
It will be announced so-and-so, 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 is it just going to be a?
It's just the name on the paper, right?
You can't have secret ballot.
Oh, okay, so I gotta.
Put your name and your vote, put your person. If I made one, it's Ms. Anderson.
Anderson, sorry.
Chris Deloach, Stevie Smith. Ricky Pastore, Stevie Smith. Mayor Breeden, Ben Kilabru. Melinda, Steve.
Stevie, I'm sorry, my handwriting's horrible.
No, no, you're good. Caleb Story, Stevie Smith. So that is, I have four votes for Stevie Smith, two votes for Ben Kilabru, and no votes for Ms. Anderson.
Now, do, he had to be sworn in? Do we have to, or how does that work?
He would need to be sworn in.
And do we do that tonight?
Typically, I have done it with the mayor, we typically have gotten the mayor to do it, so.
They'll pull it next, they'll pull it next week.
Yeah.
Okay. I had, I'd have to read it, because I don't know what I'm supposed to say.
Right, right, yeah, so yeah, he's officially appointed, then he'll be sworn in.
Okay, okay, all right. Congratulations. I think, isn't that the swearing-in words, isn't it in our?
It are.
In our codes and stuff, in our chart?
No.
I've got it at home, so I can.
I do too.
I can look at it when I get home and know, so.
Ask the mayor and try to, I think that'd be the first item on the agenda next.
Next, next meeting?
Or whatever you do before.
Okay, whichever.
Probably, yeah.
Few minutes before the meeting?
Yeah. So, and the next meeting is October 22nd, so we'll do it at the next meeting, Stevie? All right, we'll move on now. Next item, we've got planning the scare on the square for Sunday, October 27th, two to four. Any comments, suggestions, anything? Christmas on the square, December the Saturday, or no, yeah, Saturday, right?
December the 7th?
7th, okay, yeah, we've got that planned. Saturday, December 7th, two to four. And also, we'll be having our Christmas dinner Friday night before that, on the 6th, at Colton's. And Josh, I want to extend an invitation to you to join us at that Christmas dinner.
I would be happy to, thank you very much, Mayor.
We haven't set a time, if we do.
Right, we don't, we hadn't got a time set, but, what was it, around 6:00, last time, 6:00 PM?
Does that still work for everybody?
Yes, sure does.
Okay. And one other thing, what about our chili?
Whatever day you want to schedule it, usually around Halloween. That's, we have not scheduled that one yet. And Halloween, that's, Halloween's on Thursday, the 31st, and typically, we do it on a Friday, which would be October 25th.
Yeah, let's just plan on that, October 25th. Are you not here?
I'm not here that whole week.
What, you want to, let's do it the 18th. Are you here the 18th?
I am, I'll leave the 19th.
I guess you're on the all break that week, I believe. They are.
Are they?
So I don't know.
I don't need to be here.
Huh?
The chili thing, I don't need to be here, man.
Yeah, you just gotta make a pot.
Well, you make, make a pot.
If you do it on Wednesday.
Make a pot, and.
Well, then Melinda bring it.
Yes.
I didn't make the chili, I made gumbo, so.
I'll take that.
Okay.
You alleviated her from cooking.
All right, move it back to October 25th, and that's usually around 11?
Yeah, 11 to 2.
11 to 2?
11 to 1, whatever you want to do.
And that is make a pot of chili?
Yep.
Or whatever?
Soup.
Soup, gumbo. Y'all got something that day, Jackie?
When day was it?
It's Friday, October 25th.
Except chili, hot dog.
Yeah.
Don't you beat them to the square?
Uh, starts around 11, and runs till 1, 2 o'clock, just whenever the chili runs out or the people quit coming. And that's normally opened to the businesses in Charlotte, and not only businesses, but courthouse people that work around on the square.
Government offices, sheriff's department, judges.
They're, they're, they're all, they're all, you know, included, invited for that. Okay, move on to city report, or, excuse me, committee reports. Mr. Vander Voort, have anything?
Dr. Edition.
Okay, finance?
I do have something.
All right.
I got a call from the auditor, and basically, she is at a standstill right now, waiting for bank reconciliations to be completed, and so she talked to you, Jennifer?
Yes, so we transferred everything from one computer to another, and everything's having to get fixed.
Okay, because she said she can't go any further, and she wanted to make sure I let the council know, because she said, I put my number when I sent in that questionnaire we had to send in, I don't know if anybody else did or not, but that, she called me. So she said, I'll give you everybody's number, she said, just announce it in a meeting, so she's on hold until the bank recs come in.
And it's not anything from this year that's being audited, it's something that's when everything was transferred from 2022 to 2023.
Okay. Anyway, I don't know what it is she did.
I don't either.
So I want to make sure to let everybody know that she's on.
Yeah, we, we are aware of that, or the office, the office is, but the council isn't, so, yeah. Anything else? Wastewater Board, I guess the only thing I'll mention, there was concerns about buying a particular book that was going to cost around $2,000, but that's the 23rd edition, what's it called exactly?
Chad has it.
Anyway, anyway, while we were in the process of trying to do something about that.
Standards of wastewater book?
Yeah, edition 24 has been adopted, so we were able to get that one real easy and real cheap, so we won't have to get that 23rd edition.
Is there, have we figured out what we're going to do with those, with our funds, with our ARPA funds? I think we have to use those soon, right?
I think we pretty much got plans for all of ours. We're kind of, we're, we're getting kind of in a fix because the Water Authority hadn't submitted anything to them for the amount that they got, or that the amount they're getting.
What is it?
And I don't remember what the deadline, Chad tell us, give us the deadline?
I just, the only thing that I know is that, whatever it is we do, it has to be completed 2026, September, something like that, 2026?
Mm-hmm.
You have to have, like you said, you have to have plans approved.
Yeah.
Soon, I think.
Yeah, it's, I don't, Chad was supposed to. Chad was supposed to get in touch with someone out there to find out what's, because I don't remember the exact date, but I can get it, of when things have to be submitted to them, and they said they had not received anything from the Water Authority.
Do you have a general idea of what we're planning on doing with our funds?
Well, a lot of it is the buying of the SCADA system, the monitoring of the, to monitor leak, leaks, sewer issues that we may be having.
We have $65,000 remaining from the previous ARPA funds, and now we need to expend that. The other $250,000 out of the 687 that we received, we have a couple more years on that one. We have about $65,000 need to expand on something. Yeah, they're about, well, they used to be about 20, they might be a little bit more, I'm not sure, but we need, we do need to expend that, 65,000.
I'm not sure exactly, hey, Chad's got a, a plan.
We're not, not even going to those funds this year, is what we're saying? We don't have a plan for all the funds?
The 65,000?
The 400,000 or whatever it was we had. The explanation that I was given by the state was that they all have to be used by September of 2026.
Right.
That's what I'm, I don't want to lose those funds.
400 and something thousand?
The 687, remember, and we gave 400 and something to the Water Authority.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, I don't know what happens if the Water Authority don't, don't use or submit what their plans are to use that for. I don't know what our, the penalty would be, because actually, where the city received.
So it's a reimbursed base grant, so we only, when we send in money to be, to be reimbursed is when we expend the funds. I don't know, the only thing that's been sent in so far is engineering fees, but Chad has a plan of what to expend it on, the Water Authority just hasn't done their part yet, my understanding. But we do still have 65,000 from the previous ARPA funds that needs to be expended.
I win, I win.
I'll double check that date and get with you tomorrow on it.
Okay. Because if it ends in September, it matters if we don't.
No, it's.
No, it's fiscal year, everything's fiscal year.
Yeah. I don't know anything with streets and bridges, other than those that were agreed to have resurfaced or repaved. Street lights and signs, I get with Chad, I requested a stop sign to be put up here at Tracy Academy and Doyle Hill or Doyle Hall, Doyle Wall Hill or whatever road it is that goes up to the jail.
Did you have a, did you have a discussion with Ms. Ellen or no?
Not prior to her discussion with county mayor and sheriff. I was out of town the day they had that. I had one prior to that, and, which, basically, she told me that those streets belong to the city, they need to do something about it. But, you know, I know that now they have a plan going, but.
That's awful.
It is.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, honestly.
I say it's awful, I'm not, it's not, I mean, it's an unnecessary change, in my opinion.
I don't, I don't have to fight it. I know there's a lot of parents and stuff that do, but in my honest opinion, until school lets out, nobody should be allowed to park on Humphrey Street or Academy Street, not even line up, they should not be allowed on those streets.
Or 48.
Or 48.
Did you have a discussion with the sheriff about ticketing people for that?
We are getting ready to have that discussion.
I knew that, I had some parents tell me that they had seen some troopers there, but I don't know, I have not seen anyone that has been ticketed.
Nobody's been ticketed, but they've got involved.
Oh, yeah, they pulled up probably 30 people.
Because it hadn't been, well, it was, it was, it was before we went to Colorado, the traffic was backed up down 48 so far that a tractor trailer couldn't pass to go on north toward Clarksville, and now THP is getting involved, so, I mean, I'd be, I'd be happy for anybody that can resolve the issue. Public safety?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, parks, recreation, I think we, beautification, planning and zoning, planning and zoning. I'm going to reappoint Ricky back to that committee, now he's got a little experience, unless somebody else wants to do it. I know, I know Leah, Leah can't because of the, the night, Caleb, it's not good for him because he's one doing most of the developing in the city, so he wouldn't be able to vote for anything if he, so.
Ricky's already completed the training.
Yeah.
Every year.
Before I get on it, it's only a week away, huh?
No, you'll be fine. Construction, ambulance service. Okay, planning and zoning scheduled to meet October 3rd, wastewater scheduled to meet October 8th, council meeting October 22nd. If there's nothing else, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.